We'll go into item two, which is the consent agenda. At this point, we would be looking for motion, please.
I'm going to board through the minutes of the December 19th, 2017 Board of Education meeting, minutes of the December 12th, 2017 special meeting. The financial report for December 2017 checks number eight, 8389 to 8476 in the amount of $158,370.96. ACH is number 171800658 through 171800802 in the amount of $1,256,417.79. And wire transfer amount in the amount of $21,390.98 for a total of $1,435,803.73.
Second. Okay. Motion from Ms. Youskis, second from Ms. Long. Any discussion on the minutes and the financial information?
Tim, would you be able to comment on this $8,600 for a camera corner?
One more time.
$8,600 on a camera corner, ink. Just clarification. Eight thousand six hundred.
Oh, that was for some work that we hired done for our district. It's the man hours that we hired. Jack had some for the sound. We are updating the PA system at the high school. And we just had them come in and do the work for us.
We had some blank spots when we did the emergency calls out that the speakers didn't cover. So we updated that speaker system so it heard throughout the building.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll go down then to item three, citizens' delegations, public comment. Tim. And we do have one individual signed up to speak tonight, Jill Maddick Nelson. Jill, please. You want to do it from back there, you want to go up here?
I can sit back there.
Okay.
I can stand. Stand so we can hear you better. All right. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Coming tonight as a mother of three and taxpayer and professionally as a community partner with the school district. It's been a circle by stating that as a big supporter of the referendum, obviously they failed. You know, that's not a consideration now. But as a result, we are moving towards consolidation. And with consolidation breaks change. Change can be very positive with great outcomes. And I don't think people are opposed to change. However, the reason I'm speaking today, I'm a bit concerned about decisions that have been made recently in a lack of or a reduction of staff morale in the district, which is concerning to me as a parent and as a community member. I reached out to some educators in our district just to get a sense for how they were feeling. There's a lot of rumors and information going on, are being spread. And I just wanted to gather some information. And two things that I found as themes in speaking with educators in different buildings and at different levels is a sense of fear and feeling overwhelmed. The fear of not knowing what's going to happen with the district, not knowing if you're going to have a job. Emails that are coming that spark fear and a sense of feeling overwhelmed. A lot of initiatives, a lot of new practices being put in place, which is great. But I'm getting a sense that educators are feeling a lack of support and feel that they can't become strong in any one area because they're just too overwhelmed. So as a parent, as a community member, those things are a bit concerning to me. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then I also wanted to touch on the non-renewals that were received by three administrators recently. Certainly, I didn't receive a non-renewal, I'm not a district employee. So the information I received is secondhand, it's thirdhand, it may not be accurate. So, you know, I'm not saying it's true, but it's brought me to have concerns. I guess one of the bigger concerns I have with those non-renewals or a question I would have for the board is whether or not those administrators were able to have meetings and discussions with their superintendent prior to receiving those non-renewals. I guess I feel, I would assume that there are deficits that those employees had, which would translate to a non-renewal for some sort of reason. And I would hope that there was an opportunity, and I'm not saying they're what's playing. I just feel I hope that there would be an opportunity for those administrators to have had meetings, to have had management plans for the plans, so that they could have an opportunity to, one, know what their deficits are. If they don't know what they're doing wrong, they're not going to be able to fix it. And, two, understand what their timeframe is and give the opportunity to make those changes. I think that personally, I feel that three administrators do a very, very good job. And I think our district's very lucky to have them. So again, I don't know how it all went about, I don't know what the decision was that led to it. But I just hope moving forward, or I just hope in general that those discussions are had prior so that all of our district employees can feel confident in the jobs they do and don't have to be worried or concerned of receiving a non-renewal for not doing it, less than not knowing it. But that being said, I just wanted to end with specifically talking about Jeff McHale. And the reason I would like to point out Jeff is because I've worked with him professionally and personally. So I just have a close relationship to speak to. I think Jeff is an outstanding individual. I think he's a huge asset to our district. He's incredible, he's caring, he's compassionate, he's empathic. He cares about his students, he knows about them, he knows their strengths and their weaknesses. He knows so much about them, he cares so much about them. He understands that students don't succeed if their basic needs aren't being met. And he seeks to reach those basic needs to the best of his ability or seek community resources for those students and families. And for me as a parent, that's what I want in a principal in our district. And I think that's really important. You know, you can have, you can have the five most talented players on the court, but if they're not playing with heart, you're not going to get anywhere. And I just feel that Jeff has that talent and has that heart. It'd be my hope as a parent and as a taxpayer that there could potentially be further discussion on where he will or will not remain in the district. So I appreciate the ability to speak with you. And as always, I appreciate all the time and effort that you put in. And now being a board member is not easy, it's a thankless job. And I certainly appreciate and thank all that you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Okay. Jill, once again, thank you. Moving on. Student representative report. Erica, Jack, what do you got first name?
So this weekend, we have winter ball going on. And this year, people, we have this Red Robin Clothing Closet where you are able to go get clothes free. And this year, there was people donating properties so that other people can have access to them.
Other than that, obviously, the semester ended, so finals. I don't think everybody got through finals or whatever. And then also, I'd like to bring to your attention or just talk about promoting Ruin Monday. Because I know that it's promoted or it's, you know, known by like administration. I see all teachers wearing same shirts on Monday. People who work in the central office, I know, wear Ruin on Monday. But, you know, I don't think any of the students really know it, they know what it is. But I think it'd be, it'd just be cool, it'd be, you know, something more that we can do to just promote school spirit and whatever, you know. And whatever sports are going on, activities, that kind of thing. You know, it's all, it's all the same.
So semester's over, you passed your tests.
I didn't ask.
Good man. All righty. Thanks, Eric. Any board members have any questions in the student cell? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Item B, or no, excuse me, new business. Item A, committee of the whole. Do you look in first for motion to approve minutes?
Will the board approve the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting? Jeff in the night, 2017.
Second. Motion from Dr. Deep, second from Mr. Pyatt. You've all had an opportunity to view the minutes. Any questions, comments on the board?
Only that, Mike, I'd like to abstain from voting as I was about to add.
Oh. We're good, Eddie. No problem. I didn't know that was a rule. No.
It's not necessarily a rule, is it?
No, it is not. So, okay. Any other questions? All righty. You see in the minutes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And one abstention. And motion carries. Item B. North Elementary Student Council donation to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Can I assume that's why we have all these smiling faces over here? All righty. Am I leaving this in your capable hands? All righty, cool. Oh, yeah. JD, kick the lights off up here, I think. So maybe you'll hit the right switch. Can everyone see? You guys can stand closer, we don't like.
So I am April Schofield.
Anne Kleinschmidt.
And we are the student council advisors at North Elementary School. We started a student council last year as part of our PDIS initiative to get more student involvement and student voice into some of the things we are doing in our school. And these are a few of our student council members. Not everyone can make it tonight, but we just really wanted to highlight some of the things that we were, that we did this year, just in the month of December is what we're focusing on. And also thank Co-Managed Credit Union because we partnered with them on a project to raise money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
Can I bother you and have the students introduce themselves?
Of course.
Can I tell you?
I want to, can we start with this gentleman right over here? Before we tell his name, I just wanted to highlight too that it was his idea to donate some funds to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. He has a very big heart, so.
So he's kind of a big deal.
You can introduce yourself.
I'm Nico Mayo. I'm Charles Kuyatik.
I'm Jamie Aldis.
I'm Ada Wish-Tutko.
Thank you.
All right, so to show what we did, we created a little video for all of you. It'll just last a couple minutes. And if you have any questions for them afterwards, you have prepared to answer a little bit.
We are North Elementary Student Council. We are third, fourth, and fifth graders, and we are leaders at our school. In December, we volunteered our time and raised funds for charity to show our gratitude.
We have many things to be grateful for.
We are grateful for.
Friends.
Our school.
Our teachers.
Bob.
My busy brother.
Family.
Animals.
And students.
We filed a special project. We rang bells to raise money for our community.
We sang Christmas chais and had lots of fun.
We partnered with Co-Managed Credit Union to raise money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
We held a family read-a-thon and Co-Managed donated $0.60 for every minute we read. We raised $268.20. We learned a lot. Thanks for listening. Remember to make gratitude your attitude.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
I tell you.
Thank you.
April, John, Donna, your whole staff, thank you. That's tremendous. Absolutely. It's, we work together, it's amazing. JD.
Jeff, thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Moving on to item C. The auditor's report. Tim.
Mike, tonight, we have Josh Swanson here with Shane to present the financials. In your board docs, there should be both the management letter and then financial statements. But I've also got copies here. If you'd like hard copies, you're welcome to have them. I'll just leave them out on the table and you can take them or I can give you now. You just want to?
Yeah, I'll take one.
Yeah.
It's good reading.
As Tim passes out the report, like I said, I'm Josh Swanson. I'm responsible for the Hennig School District Audit. I'm the manager, I shrink. And if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt, otherwise we can say those until the end. Starting with the bottom copy, the annual financial report. We'll just go over a couple of different areas. Starting on page one, the independent auditor's report. This briefly outlines what an audit is. It discusses management's responsibility for the financial statements. It discusses the auditor's responsibility for the financial statements. And at the bottom, it discusses our opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean opinion this year, similar to prior years. It's unmodified opinion, meaning we would not make any material modifications to the report that you have. All of the required disclosures according to accounting rules are included in this report. Like I said, it's the opinion you've received in other years, which is the result that you want from the audit. On page four, this is your statement of net position for the entire district as of 30th, 2017. Basically, a balance sheet. This is not quite how the district budgets, so I don't want to spend a whole lot of time. It's kind of intended to compare the district, if you were run as a business. So it focuses on both short-term and long-term assets and obligations. Whereas with budget, it's more of a near-term, short-term, and close and outclose. So as you can see, the total net position of the district, assets minus liabilities at the end of the year is just shy of $25 million. Again, it's not how you budget, but it's just important to kind of keep that in your mind. It was kind of the magnitude of the dollars of what you're responsible for managing for the district. The one line, the big change from last year, as you can see, under long-term obligations, other post-employment benefits liability went from about $9.6 million to under $2 million. That roughly $8 million decrease was primarily due to a new accounting standard. Nothing has, you know, benefits have changed as far as your retirees are concerned. It's simply a new accounting standard. So about $6.8 million of that decrease was related to new accounting rules. And really, nothing that the district has changed. So that's the one big change.
So where's the $8 million if it's not represented here? Or is it represented here?
It's not represented there. On the next page, that $6.8 million, you'll see is accumulated by factor change in accounting principle. So it's simply the way the liability was amortized, you know, new standards. There's more information in the footnotes if you want, but it's about $1 million of the decrease. $1 million was resulting in the district paying down the liability. And then the result in $6.8 million was because of the accounting standard. Page six is the balance sheet of the general fund and other governmental funds with comparative numbers of 2016. This is how the district budgets. So this is more of the short-term inflows and outflows, looking at your total assets and total liabilities as well as your fund balance as of the end of the year. And then on page eight is your income statement, looking at revenues and expenditures for the general fund and other governmental funds with comparative numbers of 2016. Overall, very comparative to prior year. Your fund balance in the general fund is about $5.8 million, which puts you right at about 15% of your general fund expenditures and special education fund expenditures, which is at the top end of your fund balance policy. So that's right where you want to be as far as fund balances. Questions with that? The rest is all footnotes and other disclosures that I won't fit into. But if you have any questions on the annual financial report, you can reach out to Tim or myself.
You talk a little bit, and I was just reading through before, about the two deficiencies you noted.
Yep. Yeah, I was going to get into that and the management communications. So there are, I guess I'm paid. The management communication goes into a little more detail about what the audit is. I won't get into those details. But as you said, the two deficiencies, the first one is preparation of the annual financial report. We assist the district in preparing this. They keep Tim, Don, they keep accurate records, we're not making changes to those. But the conversion from how you record transactions to the full report of the additional footnotes, that requires just some additional work that we have. So what we do is we just have to disclose that. There's not one school district that we do that we do not have that funding, so they're common. But it's just something that we need to make you aware of. So that's the first finding for this, the financial statements. On page three, it discusses the finding for federal and state awards. The district has a single audit every year. What that means is you spend enough federal funds to have a compliance audit of various federal and state programs. So one of the programs that we looked at this year was child nutrition. So that looks at pre and reverse lunches and breakfasts. Two of the, if you're not familiar, the families submit an application and their eligibility is determined by district personnel. There's also an additional verification process. So we found a couple of, two exceptions in the application and verification process. They're immaterial from an audit perspective as well as a federal awards perspective. But it's just something that we're required to disclose. Management is aware of the finding and has taken corrective action. They've responded to the finding and where the financials are paid and that's to be eliminated next year.
JD, does that answer your question? Essentially, we had two brand-new employees at the start of the school year when we are doing certification. And there was just an error in the classification of one of the applications. And they've since received additional training and were doing a more thorough job of review. So does one person double-check it, etc., double-check? All right, second person double-checks it. Do we, are we liable for that amount of money? That high school is not that much, it's probably $300. Does that just come out of the general fund or something? There was no, I mean, you can explain.
Yeah, there was no payback of the funds. It was below any kind of threshold from as far as the federal government's concerned. And that's from an audit perspective as well. So it's very immaterial from what I can hear. On page four, it just discusses some other informational items, disagreements with management. We did not have any disagreements. Like I said, Tim and Don keep accurate records, they're very helpful throughout the audit. We keep them pretty busy, the one we're here, so we definitely appreciate their assistance. Makes our job a lot easier, so we definitely appreciate their hard work. And I've really ever went in the finance office, so we thank them for that. And then on page five, I touched on the governmental fund, or the general fund balance before, but page five of the management letter just shows other funds with comparisons to prior year as well. So, like I said, you're right at the top end of your fund balance policy. Any other questions? I know I went through it fast, but... All right.
Josh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, social media.
Buck, did you include that report in there?
Yeah.
This is just, this comes from the company that we contract with that does the lion's share of posts to our social media. And so they are showing you trends in the communication that has happened from October to December 2017 of what your community outreach is through that time period. And then they are showing you some of the top Facebook posts as well as your activity on Twitter and Instagram. It has tools to communicate with your public. Give you some suggestions for improvement.
This is the second page, is that all the schools that they work with?
Yes.
So you're saying we have the second most Facebook likes out of like thirty-some schools?
Yeah.
Did they, what happened so our likes keep going up and up and up, but our people who read them went down? I guess. We posted something really exciting in December, or October 2nd?
I don't know if that's detailed in here, if we get that level of detail. But you can see, one of the things that looks like we are doing a really good job in elementary in terms of posting and our suggestions would be to engage at the middle school and high school posting pictures of the activities that the students are doing there. But it's good, I mean, it's a very good report. That's good investment for the district and a good tool in terms of getting outreach when you look at all the other schools and how we can.
Important to get the information out there, notice in the report too, it said on the twentieth, the video of the Red Robin Clothing Closet, which Eric, I believe he brought up earlier, there is $14,041 picked up, which is that one post.
Yeah, and if you look, I mean, we're a smaller district than a lot of these and we're getting, we're the second highest in activity and engagement with our page. So it is a good form of communication for us.
I saw a chuckle, Instagram, we're not so hot. We're only twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I do follow our Instagram, we're just not a lot of activity there.
But we got some tweeters.
Do we post regularly on Instagram or is it as frequent as on Facebook? That probably explains that.
I would say Facebook, there are more posts.
You know, if you don't update any posts on Instagram.
Yeah.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's good to see that that is, that's working for us. Any questions on that for the board? Moving on to new business, to item B. Update on the Matu, offer to purchase.
Sorry, I sent you the update that they are just needing more time.
They had the discussions with their board and looking at the offer a little harder, so. We'll wait to see what they come back with.
Do we have a timeline and, you know, we want to wait for them to come back or something?
We did not set another one. Is it something you'd like to do, do you think, Andy? Is it something you'd like to do, do you think, Annie?
I guess not, we already set one, so.
All right. That case will be moving on to item six, which is board action. Have received a request to move items G and H to after the closed session, so I feel a promotion to do that, to amend the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we move items G, hires and H resignations until after the closed session.
I have a motion from Ms. Youska to move items G and H from the board action to after the closed session. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, those items will be moved to after the closed session. So we will go first to item A, policy review. These are both entered for the first reading and also to advise the board that, we were informed just before the meeting, that policy 453.4, administration of medication, is not completed yet, so we will delay the first reading of that till, I believe, we can be at the whole?
Yeah.
Okay. So then we'll look at item 345, or policy, 345.6, graduation requirements.
So you have the changes that are highlighted in red. Adding the requirement of the personal finance. So it increases your elective credits to 9.5. Increases your total required credit credits to 24.5. Still puts our kids in a comfortable position to earn their credits in a timely fashion for graduation.
And this is due to a change to state law, which does require you to teach financial literacy?
Yeah, we need to bring ourselves into compliance with that requirement.
Did that requirement say that you have to have a course for credit, or does it say you have to teach financial literacy in the 12th grade?
You have to embed it, that's correct. You have to embed it. So we'll work to embed it in the middle school. This will meet, this will meet the requirement.
This will meet the requirement.
It won't be the only thing that we'll do. If there's a place in seventh grade, we have an advisement, we go to consolidation, we will offer some opportunities at that level as well.
Are we still thinking about increasing the graduation requirements, type of study levels?
I think that's certainly something you have room to look at when you're requiring 24.5 credits and you have 32 credits. You know, I think right now our students can earn about a year's worth of college credits when they graduate, first time, is that about accurate? So I'd like to see us add to that so that our students can log more college credits. You know, that's undergoing review right now at the state level, as they've recently shifted the class to the districts, which would potentially reduce what that happens. But I know that there is work right now to write new legislation that would reverse that again, so that the, you know, the Lions share 75% of what is going to fall in the districts. So there'd be no way except to reduce that, when in fact, most districts are looking to increase that. So I would like us to continue, we already talked about that a lot here, if our high schools, our high school staff can offer more classes for dual credit. You know, we have the technical college right here in town, so we should have some opportunities to capitalize on that. And a lot of these four-year schools are pretty nimble, as their loans go down, trying to work with high schools to try to create new opportunities. So I think it's academic and career planning that's going here, and I'm seeing some really nice enthusiasm and wider engagement with our high school staff and our middle school staff, I think. I think that for them will grow, so it won't happen overnight, but I see us growing in that.
Is that Tom? Do you guys want to transfer to like tech, or do you think transfer to high school?
It depends on the class that you take, and Tom could probably speak better to that than I.
Any other questions?
Someone had mentioned that they only transfer to the technical colleges, and I was wondering, do they transfer to all colleges?
It depends on the class, I mean, some are technical school classes. And even when you take those four-year ones, I mean, you do have to be knowledgeable, would you agree, Tom, in terms of the colleges that will accept those credits?
Yeah, the NTC on their website has a link that'll show students and parents, if they take a dual-credit course, how and where to transfer, whether it's a four-year college in our, in our state or outside of our state. They have developed partnerships with specific universities in our, in our state, and I know they work with, I think it's Northern Michigan, Michigan Tech.
To take the technical school.
That information is there, where students can see how their dual-credit course of transferring.
But the work that's being done right now on reversing the legislation that passed the Lions share the responsibility to the K-12 schools is being written in partnership with only the public, four-year universities in the state. So the private schools wouldn't necessarily have the same agreement unless something happens to expand that. But, you know, I mean, kids have to be good consumers of that as well, and be aware of where you intend to go in school, in-state, elder state, private school, public school, and be looking at which schools take those credits. But, you know, kids are pretty astute today, and they'll shop around to find the college that will accept the majority of those credits to reduce their cost and time of that college experience.
So you're saying the new legislation will reduce the cost to districts?
That they're proposing right now.
That they're proposing legislation. Yes.
Right. I'm gonna be cautiously optimistic that something's gonna happen, or districts are gonna eliminate, which would be travesty for kids.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions on that policy? It is, of course, the first reading, so it will come back to the board for a second reading for passage, so we'll have an opportunity to review it further as we'll bring it up at the next, next second reading and then move from there.
Yeah, maybe we'll have an update on the hearing, covering it by now.
Item B, S.P.E.D. open enrollment seats available for 2018, 2019.
So this is your inner requirement, that you have to set these seats every January under state statute? So what Heidi does is goes through and looks at the caseloads of our current staff and where we would have room to grow. And as you can see, we don't have a lot of room to grow, that we're at capacity in a lot of our programs.
What does cross-categorical program mean?
Chris, how you wanna talk about that?
That would just be our more moderate needs, not our highest needs, students, they might be used to certain disabilities, they need less service than, they are mostly educated in the regular classroom, they might have some pullout for specified need areas, so they could be, cross-cat, just mean they could be emotional behavioral, SOB.
Have its intent in a specific area?
Right, so I think we have some seats I put in there, five. We just, it's really hard to determine caseloads, they shift a lot. And so right now, with the number of teachers that we have, we have pretty high caseloads. So I just want to be careful that we're not accepting...
How many of those are in the building? Many?
I don't know how many, honestly, off the top of my head. We don't have that many open enrolled into the district that have special education.
Did you guys tell me?
Under five. Bobby, I don't know, I know last year it was under five. It's open enrolled in. And I don't think we have many open enrolled out either that are special.
It's a great deal. I think our geography prevents people from school hopping and jiving, you know, as much as you might see in districts that are more closely clustered.
I just thought I vaguely remembered that we had all zeros last year on this report, so I didn't know.
No, there were, we had eight, I actually reduced it. There were two that, I think, high school seats we had. I had eight and maybe middle school five, I just reduced it to five each, I think, and it was best out. But I think we have zero for elementary, correct? Because right now it's, we have very high caseloads. There's three open enrolled in this year that are special needs.
In the high school?
Just in general. Grade seven, twelve in town.
Any other questions? Heidi, thank you for your input. Item C, medical advisor agreement. I believe this is a change due to Dr. McKenna's sabbatical from the community. Is that correct? And I don't think this requires any board action.
If you had looked at the language previously and had some importative changes.
Said some new signature with Dr. Schneider.
This change, okay. And the new individual would be Dr. Andrew Snyder.
Correct.
So will this be for the 2018 school year, or the 2017 slash 18 school year? Or the 18 slash 19 year?
Why don't it should be the calendar year?
Which really...
It is calendar year?
Yeah, it's listed as calendar year, so you'll review it again any year.
Right.
Okay.
Can we make that change under, it says 2018 school year, so can we just change that to calendar year 2018?
Sure.
Yes.
You already signed it, though. You wanna make her re-sign it?
Well, you could approve it with that caveat that...
I think since we've already approved the contract in and of itself, just to doctors, we'll get with that, so if there's any additional board action.
Did you not take photo on the spent dates? Go back to the... Do you wanna finish that agreement?
Yeah, well, let's see, let's see where we got a motion here. We don't, okay, we'll jump back to the meeting real quick because I was remiss in going up so quickly without a vote, so. Are you looking for a motion to approve the spread open seat enrollment report? Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Youska, second from Mr. Piot. I think we've already, any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And then we'll jump back down to item C to approve the change, or motion to approve the change from Dr. McKenna to Dr. Schneider on the medical advisor agreement. Motion from Dr. Diet, second from Mr. Mary, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We are now back on track. Item D, the high school baseball diamond contract. Here's the agreement between the city and the school district, a sum of $1,900, reduce the ball fields for the 2018 season. This is, Tim, is this comparable to what it has been in the past? Yeah, we got a, we got a notice from Sarah that the rates this year are the same as last year, but they anticipate the rates to go up a little bit next year because they're apparently not covering the costs of prepping the fields for softball. So they're giving us a notice one year in advance that they're gonna be going up, or they're the same as last year.
Did it say how much they're gonna go up?
J.D., they did, and I just can't find the email right now. I might have it here. I don't think it was, they're going up from $1,900 to $2,300. And it has to do with rental of some porta potties. That happened. Okay. Well, we'll look at that for next year.
I'll make a motion to approve the high school baseball diamond contract.
Do we have a second? Motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Youska, to approve the baseball diamond contract. Any discussion? Censors money involved in this, and Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
G. Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danny Piot?
Yes.
Noel Diet?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item E, field trip to the Science Museum of Minnesota. We all have a nice six-page proposal in front of you. Very well spelled out.
Mrs. Thode, yes.
Yep.
I'll just mention it one more time, but as we move towards consolidation, I mean, this is a really great deal, but it would be nice to include perhaps another school or a school that this school is gonna consolidate with.
Say, do we got other fifth-grade teachers here, can we just send them all this year?
Yeah, if they, I mean, it would...
Twenty shamperons per grade, though, that's a lot of shamperons.
They do do a great job of raising money here. And...
Family involvement, too.
You have family involvement, but, you know, this is a really great experience for kids, but we also have a lot of kids in our district that will never get this experience. And I think we, socio-economically, we know that at Spring Valley, at some point in their lives, a lot of kids will get an experience like this, whereas at some of our other schools, we have kids that won't. And it's, it's really a great experience, and we should work as far as giving it to more kids.
Elementary principals are taking notes.
You got... I'm sure they've taken notes before.
You know, and I know Bill has, I think the students have put a lot of work into writing letters and raising money, and it takes a lot of labor. And I apologize for interrupting, because Bill's at Spring Valley, he wasn't able to be here tonight. So I don't know if it could be done, J.D., by May fourth, I think, I don't think, you have to reserve quite, quite an empty, something like that.
Yeah, I realize that he puts a lot of effort into raising money in, throughout the community for this one field trip. And just saying, in the interest of fairness as a district, this field trip could rotate around to schools, it could include more schools.
And I will echo your response, 'cause I do wholeheartedly agree, and I, I believe I'll hopefully share that. I just don't know if it could get, get it done by May fourth and by other schools, but I agree. I mean...
Would we get $20,000 in the budget for that?
Yeah, if we got it done by May fourth of 2019, maybe that would be good.
Maybe it's something we can do, like fourth and fifth graders, two, you know, I don't know, and then it's every other year, and then it's almost like one year, fourth and fifth grader school from this school, and then the next year, fifth grader school, I don't know, something like that.
As a teacher should come up with a proposal, what they want to do, don't think we as a board should agree with that.
Well, right.
If they, if they come up with a proposal like this, that's okay.
I'm just throwing the idea out to the other staff that are here.
We're gonna give them their homework.
No pressure.
No pressure. All right. So they're just looking for a, wants to do this to proceed?
I'm quitting.
Yes. Let's have one.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the proposal to allow the Spring Valley fifth graders to go out of state for their field trips in 2018.
Motion for Ms. Youska, second from Mrs. Wong.
Probably wrong.
Actually, the motion was me, second Wong.
That one.
We got a motion here and a second there.
Gotcha.
Cool. Okay, any further discussion on it for the board? Once again, with money involved, Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
Gina Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danny Piot?
Yes.
Noel Diet?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
And J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Well, we wish them a wonderful time on their excursion to the Science Museum of Minnesota. I know they'll get a lot out of it. Years past, I think we heard the kids are, it's a very worthwhile trip, so, good deal. Item F, E-rate programs for the 2018, 2019 school year. Mark, can you go ahead and explain that to the board?
Sure, the category one that you see in front of you is pretty much, they cover 80%, well, even the category two, they cover 80% of what we need, and we pay the 20%. So you need the bids are the $27,000, but kinda have the, what our share is over on the right, oh, that's...
That's the category one, that's, well, actually, those calculations are pretty easy to see, it's an 80/20 right off the top of the bat there. The category two is, uh-
Just a second, Mark. So when Mark talks about category one, he's really talking about getting the internet into the buildings. Maybe you can just, just briefly touch on the different types there and what WISNET is and-
WISNET is a service that we, that we pay for, that we actually get this reduced price for the actual connection of their ISP. They're providing us with a internet service provider connection for, and then we, comes into the high school and then it gets branched out to all of our buildings. So to get that to the other buildings with the Serenity bid, the top one there, for, that's a radio line that's going from the high school, again, out to the cities, out to the rural schools. So that cost there is what each line costs to get to those elementarys.
Say that again, is it physical line, or it's like-
No, it's a radio rate connection out to those, they have towers. The hardest ones get, was crushed, because it's down in a hollow, but the other ones are pretty real, easy to get to, Spring Valley, and pleasant with pretty straight shots.
The extra money comes from the state, or from the federal government?
Yes, E-rate is a federally funded program.
So we're not really gonna have $27,000 or $100 when we shut those into schools?
No, you'll actually have the $5,400 section.
That's one hundred.
Or 20%. Keep begging. Then the bottom line is the city fiber lines that are actually, any of us that has been along as round as I have, we helped pay for the city to run that fiber lines. So now our payment finished February of '16, so now we actually own those lines technically, so we're just help having them maintain, on insurance, if something goes down. Because a lot of them are above ground, and some are below ground. So if something happens to those lines, because Serenity bought those lines way back when they took over from the city, I mean, they don't own them, but they can maintain them for us. So that, this is a maintenance line that's paying, and that gets the, to the five city buildings the internet. And, and the connections back to the high school for servers, that's not the only thing we use the lines for. Communication between buildings, with the phones, all happens through that, too. Okay? Category two is infrastructure, part of E-rate, that's a little bit more intense. You gotta get bids, you have 28 days to ask for the bids, and then 28 days later before you can accept any bids. So it's all timed, everything's gotta get timed out, and you can't do anything until they say it's okay. And even though we've got our bids back, we can't apply for the next step of that until, I think it's February 11th or 19th, February 19th, before we can even take the next step. So I tried to get it done beforehand, so that we, you guys could help maybe approve it tonight, so that when that date comes available, we can instantly get that paperwork done and get it out of that, at the soonest date that they allow us to. So, um, and this year, the wireless access points, there's one right up here, that's what they look like right now. There's, um, we, we're going with this proposal, we're gonna have one in every single classroom in the, in the district. Okay, right now, the middle school is the only one that had that, just because of the age of the building, the density of the walls, and everything like that. Two years ago, we just put one in each classroom to handle that. The other ones, we've been going about every other classroom. But with this new proposal, there'll be a drop in every classroom to handle, the closer to one-on-one situation we're gonna be from K through 12. So this'll help us get there. Last year, you allowed us to wire the buildings with the category two funded. Now we're actually gonna take advantage of that wiring we did last year, and apply the access points to them.
How much is each one individually?
What was that?
Roughly, I was gonna try to divide it, 88,000 divided by the number of rooms, but, how much is it, is it $100, $500, or?
Yeah, I believe they're 395, depending on the model we get, the low-end of model, that, we'll have some higher-end ones. J.D., like in large areas, auditorium, fieldhouse, they'll get bigger ones, so that they can handle more people attaching to them. They'll have larger ones, they'll be a little bit more expensive than standard room-sized ones. That's what those bids are for. You can see the, all the other bids, Camera Corner came in right at a sweet spot. Arrow Hive was lower, but they, they didn't have enough access points, they just sort of blanketly put 200 access points on their bid, and are not, that price doesn't include them actually hanging them for us. So Camera Corner, Aruba is really setting the standard right now for access points. They recently took over Cisco for the best air, best wireless access points in the nation. So we're getting a really good deal, and they're mounting 98% of them. They won't, they won't screw any holes in outside of the buildings, so we have three here, two at the middle school that will be outside to handle bus areas. So there'll be access for outside in the, in the larger building. And they won't put those up, and they won't jump on, to get it in the fieldhouse, we have to hang those off that tower, so. Minor, minor adjustment, but that, my, my approval was Camera Corner because of the Aruba, and they work best with the HP switches that we have in all of our closets, so.
We had them last year, correct?
Yes, yes, they, we, it's pretty much an ongoing project with, with Camera Corner. They're out of Green Bay, we seem to have had the best service and best luck with them, so, it worked out the best, so. If you have any questions about the other bidding, you can see the eligibility. There's some stuff that they bid that isn't E-rate eligible. You can see the Camera Corner bid had $12,098. That means $12,098 was not E-rated, we can't ask E-rate to give us 80% of that, because they're saying that's not E-rated, so it's not eligible for E-rate, so. Therefore, that's why that money is sticking out, so. You can see as we go down the line, the eligibility, the 80%, it goes off of them at 76,883, and then the 20%. Now, the 20%, we, I have to get the worksheet done by, my filing date is February 2nd, to the Teach Foundation. That's gonna repay us that $15,376 from the Teach. So our total end-up bill will only be just under $13,000 for that $89,000 group of stuff. By the time I apply for all the other funding and everything, get back, so.
Pretty well explained to the board? So, Mark, in terms of a motion, are you asking for one motion for category one, and one motion for category two, and are you asking for the total amount bid?
Well, I, I, I just assumed that we were gonna, you know, you could do it either way, that's gonna be up to the board, if you wanna do them separate, or do them together, but, I mean, on the bottom of the sheet is, are the questions, accept the full amount for the bids, because that's what the bid was. You can see how it breaks down, what we're actually gonna pay, and the vendors already know it was an E-rate situation, that they pay 80%, and we'll pay the front of the schedule.
That's cut off on your sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So, yeah, I'm, I would, just like the board to be able to okay those, the monies in red for the total bids, and then knowing how it's gonna end up at the end, the vendors already know that also, so.
I would just add, I think the, the E-rate is a pretty onerous project, it's, I mean, no such thing as free money, and it's also kind of a dreaded task for business offices and tech people, and I think Mark does a really good job of making sure we're there. That's being a buck with them.
Mark, does it, we don't have that money total, what does it owe?
I'm sorry, the Serenity for the rural digital lines is a total of $27,000 for one year.
Why do you have the grant, though?
Right, polling grant.
But I, but I thought you said that our share would only be the one in the orange on the right, the peach color one.
That'll be our share, all said and done, right. So whatever you think is appropriate to do, I, I don't know board ethic as well as others, so.
My question is, if we are approving the $27,000 plus the $12,600 plus 8580?
Noel, what happens is, and depending on the program, typically on the category two, we pay the upfront cost first and get reimbursed 80%. Okay. The category one typically varies a little bit. In the beginning of the year, we're paying the, the total cost of the program, and then at some point it catches up, and they take the discount on the bill, and they, in the end, we net our share. But at, at some point, like particularly the category two, we're paying first.
So basically, you're asking for the $27,000-
I think that would be the safe way to do it.
The $12,600 and the 8580 plus the 88,981.5, is that correct?
Right, yes, correctly, and, and to elaborate more on Tim, is that we pay for services upfront, because the E-rate process takes sometimes forever. So that, we, we're already taking advantage of those services before we get the discounts applied. So it, it, we, we're waiting for the USAC people, E-rate people to okay our bid before they can apply the, the credit.
Sounds good, I'd like to make that motion, then, that we approve the $27,000 plus $12,600 plus $8,580 and 80, plus $88,981.56.
If you asked of that motion, do you include the names of the businesses that want to-
Okay. So what, uh, the motion by Dr. Deed and the second by Mr. Schrader is to accept a bid from Serenity for $27,000 in category one, from WISNET on Badger Net for $12,600, and for Serenity for 8580, and for category two, from Camera Corner connecting point for $8,981.50. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Bobby, roll call, please.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Noel Deed?
Yes.
Andy Mary? Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Mark, they give you what you need?
Yes.
All right. As indicated earlier with the motion, items G and H have been moved till after the closed session, so we'd be going to item I on donations. So we would be looking for a motion, please.
I make a motion for board acceptance of donations from the people listed.
Please.
Anonymous, $10,000 to the Aquatic Center. Plus Consulting, $204 for school forest building project. Thomas Olson and Mary Lala Karati, $3,333.34 to theater in memory of George Olson. Elizabeth Olson, $3,333.34 to theater in memory of George Olson. Riker Remodeling, $100 for AHS Gymnastics. Normal Winter, $100 for AHS Gymnastics. David and Sherry Parsons for $500, AHS Girls Basketball. Ron and Nancy Blood, $500 for the theater sound system. Greg and Amy Sible, $500 for the theater sound system. J.P. Olson and Ruth Ann Gersten, $3,333.34 to theater in memory of George Olson. Michael and Angela Sheldon, $100 to the school forest. City Gas Company, $5,000 to the theater sound system, and $20,000 to the Aquatic Center lighting project. John McKenna, $500 to the Aquatic Center. Andy and Leona Sheldon Charitable Trust, $13,433 for the Aquatic Center. Co-Vantage Credit Union, $268.20 to the North Elementary Readathon. Michael and Angela Sheldon, $500 to the high school track team. Stone Chiropractic and Wellness, $100 to the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And McCannigo High School Volleyball Boosters Club, $6,910.34 to volleyball attack machine and supplies, for a total of $69,625.54.
So, Mr. Pyatt, on that. So we have a motion from Ms. Mead, second from Mr. Pyatt, for the approval of the donations, as noted. Any questions or comments from the board?
What a great community, very generous, very generous.
Who is, who's Mr. Olson?
That is a very good question. There was a Yelmar Olson that was in the early, in the mid-'40s, must have been mayor of Anacole, and his son ran Olson Hardware Store. And the owner of Olson's hardware, must have been George, passed away, and his kids live out of state, and they decided to give money to the high school.
Very generous of him.
So, any other comments from the board? Hearing none, Bobby, since we have this great amount of money involved, let's do a roll call, please.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Noel Deed?
Yes.
Andy Mary? Danielle Youska?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
And Mike Boldig?
Yes, with our boards and communities, our school districts, thanks for, our community for being such, God's generous, we appreciate every one of them, thank you. And that concludes the board action portion of the meeting for now. I'll be looking for a motion to go into closed session. So move. Motion by Mr. Pyatt, second by Mr. Mary, for a motion to go into a, turn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute. 19.85 per MC concerning employment performance evaluation data over any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically regarding administrative contracts and nonrevenues. Bobby, roll call both, please.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Noel Deed?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
J.D. Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Boldig?
Yes.
The board is now officially in closed session. You got the information now, Jeanie? Okay, motion was made by Danny Pyatt, second by Jeanie Long, come out of closed session. Vote was Danielle. The vote was unanimous, come out of closed session. As a result of the closed session, no action is going to be taken this evening, we will defer to a special meeting next week, when scheduled, when things are discussed. So now that we have that open session, we will go look at the two items that were tabled until this point. And first off will be new hires, and we're looking for a motion on that, please.
Move the board approve the following new hires. Tia Mark and Mr. Teacher McNaughton, 2022, 2018. Sarah Messler scored the official settlement in January 29, 2018. And Amy Guthrie has scored in Spring Valley, October 20, January 20, 2018.
Do we have a second? Second, again. Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Deed, and second from Mr. Pyatt, to approve the hires as noted. Any questions from the board? You've had an opportunity to look at the different information on them, so, any questions, comments? All right, hearing none, Jeanie, we'll do roll call both on this, please.
Okay. Andy?
Yes.
Dr. Deed?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
J.D.?
Yes.
And me, yes.
Motion carries on the new hires. Next item will be on resignation, so we'd be looking for a motion on that, please.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Nancy Rash.
Nancy Rash?
Nancy Rash. Amanda Krevashine, Anita Berner, and Tina Verhage.
Do we have a second?
What about Patrick?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to take care of that at a different time, that's not until next July, though. So, we'll have to take care of that at a different point. Nope, not on here, so. All right, motion by Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Mead, to accept the resi, for resignations. Any question on any of those? Hearing none, Jeanie, once again, roll call both, please.
Okay, Andy?
Yes.
Dr. Deed?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
JD?
Yes.
JD, yes.
Okay. That does conclude the business for this evening. In case none of you heard what was said when we came out of closed session, that the result of the closed session was that no action will be taken this evening. We will be having a special meeting next week to discuss the issues further, so we're, at this point, we are at just status quo, there is no final decision to make. So, in that case, we have concluded the business for this evening, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. We have motion from Mr. Pyatt, second from Mr. Mary, to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.